I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order. It is October 8th, 2024. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Peterson.
Goodrich.
Aye.
All council members except Peterson are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Goodrich. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vogelzang. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Our agenda is approved. Okay, next item. Very, very special to me, very near and dear to my heart, and I'm going to try to get through it without tearing up. Too late, sorry. So I have here a certificate of appreciation for Coralville Central Elementary School for 75 years of educating the students in Coralville. Whereas Coralville Central has been an integral part of welcoming and nurturing students and families in our community for seven and a half decades. And whereas Coralville's population began to grow in the 1940s, an increase in school attendance necessitated a larger school. And whereas construction of Coralville Central began in 1948 in Coralville Heights following special elections in 1945 and 1948 to approve a bond for a new school. And whereas the school known as Coralville Elementary, and now known as Coralville Central Elementary, opened its doors to students, to the students of Coralville in 1949. And whereas students, teachers, families, staff, and friends have attended this school for 75 years. And whereas Coralville Central is the oldest public elementary school in Coralville. And whereas generation of students from Coralville Central have visited City Hall, the Coralville Police Department, and the Coralville Fire Department to learn about city government. And whereas Coralville Central has been a partner with programs through the Coralville Parks and Rec Department and the Coralville Public Library. And whereas today Coralville Central Elementary embarks on year 76, brimming with enthusiasm as shown by the perpetual dedicated teachers, staff, and volunteers. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Coralville, do hereby appreciate and recognize Coralville Central Elementary for the outstanding education provided for 75 years. The city and the people of Coralville say happy birthday. Signed on this eighth day of October 2024, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay, and the reason I'm getting a little bit emotional is because I am the proud parent of five Coralville Central students. And I had my children at Coralville Central from 2006 till 2024. So a long time, and I can tell you this school means everything to me. Not only did my kids get a tremendous education at Coralville Central, but I knew every day that when they walked through the doors of that school, that they were loved. Sorry, I'm not going to cry, but they were loved and they were cared for by the teachers and the staff at that school. So thank you, yes, I'm sorry, I'm a big crybaby. So, but it really does mean a lot to, to have such a, a strong public school system, especially now that we are seeing, you know, public education and teachers are having a rough time right now. And, you know, public schools are the bedrock of our communities. They're the reason people come to our community to live and it just, it's, it makes, you know, strong public schools make our community better. So, thank you Coralville Central. We love you, we appreciate you, looking forward to the next 75 years. And I think we have some folks that were, are here to speak. Would you like to come up to the microphone and say a few words? I see the principal.
Sure, that'd be fine. Thank you very much. My name's Andy Hahn. I've been the principal of Coralville Central for this is my 11th year. And I was a teacher there for seven, so 18 years at Coralville Central. First of all, I'd like to thank the council and the city of Coralville for everything that you guys do for us and have done for us and will do for us in the future, of course. 75 years is a long time, and yes, here's to 75 more. We do have a big event, thanks to Mr. Brandstetter and Jerry and our little committee over here with Mrs. Ferguson and Mrs. Crone. On October 20th, we will have an open house from 1:00 to 4:00. There'll be a little bit of an assembly at 1:15 when some of the teachers and old principals and myself will give a few words. Maybe we'll get some students up there to say a few words. And then, it's an open tour, a self-directed tour of the historic Coralville Central. So you can come in and open house and feel free to roam around the school and see some of the old, the old building and all the new additions and everything else that have been happening over the course of the last 75 years at Coralville Central. But you're right, Mayor Foster, it's a wonderful place and, and again, I can't thank the city of Coralville enough, everybody that's been a part of it, and here's to 75 more. So thank you very, very much.
Excellent, yes, round of applause. Okay. So I would like all the Coralville Central folks to come up here. We're going to take a photo.
You too. All of you.
It's so nice to see you. Yes.
All right. Good. Yeah. Yeah, you bet, you bet. I know what I did, yeah. I'm sorry, Mayor. And saying I'm so worth it. All right. Good deal.
I apologize, I'm, I'm usually much better at keeping my emotions in check, but you know, 18 years is a long time to be a part of a, a school community. So it means a lot, it means a lot. Okay, next item, we have community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the overall comment time and the individual speaking time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So does anyone, would anyone like to speak to us? Yeah, head on up to the microphone, introduce yourself, sign your name, and talk to us.
Hello, my name is Claire Hernandez, and I'm here because I knew Ashley Hopkins, nay, Ashley Davis, she was my supervisor at stuff, et cetera. The day I heard that she got killed in the bike wreck was the same day my husband, who commutes using a bike, got in a wreck. Now, neither of these accidents were in Coralville, and I'm glad to say Coralville appears to have better bike infrastructure. But the fact is, modern Midwestern cities are not very safe places to ride bikes, and I think that my husband's accident and Ashley's death could be preventable as, as, as other accidents. There are many things that I think we could do as a city, patrol speed limits, speed bumps. There's many things done in, in countries like Denmark and the Netherlands that keep bikes safe and separate. And I think we should, as a community, my daughter's going to learn how to ride her bike in Coralville, and that goes into what I was thinking. Bikes are supposed to be easy. They're supposed to be the thing that kids use as their first mode of transport before they can ride cars. But if you look around, you don't see a lot of kids riding bikes very many places. We've got big strods, we've got big SUVs, we've got distracted drivers, and I, I don't want biking to be dangerous, and I, I, I want you guys to help make biking at least safe in Coralville.
Thank you. Did you sign your name? Okay, excellent. Thank you very much for those comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to us? Okay. Next item. We have a swearing in of some new police officers. We also have some promotions that we are excited to, to do this evening, and we have our new chief Kyle Nicholson here to share some information about the folks we're going to be swearing in tonight. Take it away, chief.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, Madam Mayor, city administration, city staff. I'd like to introduce you to some of our new officers here at the department, as well as some promotions this evening. So I'll start at the top of Lieutenant Mike Mersick. Mike Mersick grew up in Mount Vernon, Iowa, holds a bachelor's degree of arts in criminal justice from Mount Mercy University. Before joining the Coralville Police Department in August of 2016, Lieutenant Mersick served as a reserve deputy at the Lynn County Sheriff's Office. He obtained his Iowa law enforcement certification through the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy in 2016. Mike began his career as a patrol officer, later became a field training officer. He was promoted to sergeant in January of 2021, and previously served as the administrative sergeant overseeing the field training and peer support programs. Mike is also a driving instructor, CPR instructor, bike certified officer, below 100 instructor, MRAP driver, and Lieutenant Mersick will be promoted to the lieutenant in charge of investigation and administration, which was vacated by my promotion. Next up Sergeant Damon Spencer. Sergeant Spencer grew up in Waterloo, earned an associate's degree in police science from Hawkeye Community College in 2016, and completed an internship with the Evansdale Police Department. Damon joined the Coralville Police Department as a certified officer in July of 2017, having previously worked for the Hudson Police Department. Damon serves as a field training officer, is a member of the Johnson County Special Emergency Response Team, and is a firearms instructor. He's A-Ride certified and has completed the CTA interview school. Sergeant Spencer will go to the overnight shift. This sergeant vacancy was created by the promotion of Lieutenant Mersick. Our new three officers. Officer Peyton Stuckey is from Cedar Falls, and is a Mount Mercy University graduate during college. Officer Stuckey was a student athlete and played baseball. He also worked part-time for the Waterloo Blackhawks hockey team. Officer Stuckey's dad is a police officer for the University of Northern Iowa Police Department, and Peyton graduated from the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy in August of 2024. He's currently assigned to day shift patrol, and was recent released on solo patrol by himself. So he's completed our field training program. Next up Officer Thomas Keating is from Iowa City and is a Kirkwood Community College graduate, currently attending Maryville University in St. Louis for a bachelor's degree in exercise science with a focus on strength and conditioning. Officer Keating is married, has two sons, five and two years old. He previously worked as a strength and conditioning coach at Lynn Mar High School in Cedar Rapids. Thomas graduated the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy in August of 2024 and is currently assigned to late night patrol, and he just as well finished our field training program. And last but not least, Officer Chase Kicker is from Prairie City, Iowa. He's a University of Northern Iowa graduate. While at U and I, he studied criminology and graduated with his bachelor's degree. Chase's dad Troy is a law enforcement officer with the Iowa State Patrol. Prior to working in law enforcement, he worked for Highway Helper, assisting motorists on Iowa's roadways. Chase graduated from the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy in August of 2024, is currently going through the field training program with Officer Geezy. Gentlemen, come on up.
Okay, so you all have a copy of your, your oath. So I will have you all raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Say your, yeah, say your name. Okay. Aye. Okay.
Do we hope?
Yes. Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Iowa.
The Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the City of Coralville.
And the ordinances of the City of Coralville.
I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
Discharge all of the duties of the office of police officer in the City of Coralville as now or hereafter required by law.
Discharge all of the duties of the office of police officer in the City of Coralville as now or hereafter required by law.
Okay, congratulations, everyone. And I think we have some badge.
Can I get one photo with all of you then?
Yes, you bet, you bet.
All right, yeah, and our, our promoted individuals, if they're significant other spouse, dad, whoever it might be, come up and pin them, get their badge.
Okay, yes, thank you, congratulations, everyone. And thank you, everyone, for coming and supporting our officers, really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Okay. Just wait for the room to clear. Okay. All right, moving on. Item number seven, we have the second reading of our urban renewal ordinance, and this ordinance will capture the base amount value of Lot 1 Royal Yas and Divas subdivision and Lot 2 Jacobs Clear Creek Third subdivision. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2024-1007, and ordinance amending ordinances numbers 65067997-786, 2001-941, 2002-95, 2005-1014, 2013-1007, 2015-1018, 2016-1020, 2017, and 1016, 2020, 2015, 1015, and 2021, 1013, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on all property located within the mall and Iowa Six Urban Renewal Project area in the City of Coralville, County of Johnson, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Coralville, County of Johnson, Iowa City Community School District, and other taxing districts be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to an endness including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by said city in connection with said urban renewal redevelopment project, introduced for second consideration by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Seconded by Nguyen. Any questions or discussion? All right, roll call.
Can we?
Oh.
Where are these again? Okay, there are two, two properties here. One of them is that West Core Drive, the hotel and flat retail is almost completed, and there's one on James Street in Coro Javine, that is another hotel that's almost completed. So those two properties.
All right, anything else? All right, roll call.
Councilmember Vogelzang.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes. Next item, interference with streets and use of buildings. This is a third reading of an ordinance that would amend Section 4010 to prohibit not only groups of people from blocking streets and sidewalks, but also individuals and materials as well. Could I have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 2024-1006, and ordinance amending Chapter 40.10 of the Code of Ordnance of the City of Coralville regarding blocking sidewalks, introduced for adoption, third and final consideration by Councilmember Vogelzang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Next item, Wells 16 Improvements Environmental Information Document. A public hearing on the environmental information document is a requirement to receive state revolving funds for the Wells 16 improvements, and the public hearing on this item will be held on November 12th, 2024. Can I have the ordinance, please?
Resolution.
I'm sorry, the resolution, the resolution, please.
Resolution setting a public hearing on an environmental information document and direct published notice of the same, both for Wells 16 improvements, is introduced for adoption by Councilmember Aye, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Vogelzang. Questions, comments, or discussion? Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And finally, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Nguyen. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Next item, city administrators' report.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Today, we had a good day, it was great weather, and this morning, staff, council member, and some others, Iowa DNR staff planted 60 of the 100 trees that were purchased around Coralville in two different locations. The Parks Department had written a grant and got 20,000 from the IDNR, there was no match, and so there were trees put on North Ridge along the green space there between Janary and Lencrest, and then over on 12th Avenue going down the hill, there was trees put in there. So a lot of work was done. And also this afternoon, Midwest One Bank closed all their Iowa City Coralville banks, and they had staffs, over 700 staff members around the community doing work in all kinds of different projects. In our particular case, we had 13 of them that planted over 200 bushes in Coralville. So a lot of work was accomplished in making our community look beautiful today. Just a couple of things coming up, on Sunday, the Veterans Memorial Dedication will be this Sunday at 1:15 at the Coralville Cemetery on First Avenue, and we look forward to that being formally dedicated. And then the Fire Department Open House and Soup Supper is from 4:00 to 8:00 that evening on this Sunday. So a lot of fun things to be able to do this weekend. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Mayor's report, I really don't have anything this evening. City Administrator covered the, the things that were, were on my list as well. We do have a, a, some really fun community celebrations coming up with the, the things that Kelly mentioned, and then also the Coralville Central Celebration coming up the following Sunday, October 20th. So, you know, stay tuned, those are going to be some, some really fantastic events. The only other thing I wanted to, to note is the, the comments regarding the, the bike safety. Ashley Hopkins was a very dear friend of mine, actually, and I, I, you know, it's, it's really, really hard to, to, you know, imagine a world without Ashley in it, and so I, you know, send condolences to her family, you know, her friends, several of her friends were my friends as well. So, you know, she will be, be missed. I'm glad that, that, you know, your family member was, was okay, but obviously, bike safety is very important, and it is something that we take very seriously in Coralville. You know, a lot of our council members are cyclists as well, and I'm proud of the infrastructure that we have, the trails and the things like that, but, you know, there's always ways to update, always ways to look at improving safety, and I know that, that we are, are very committed to that. And I would just, you know, remind folks that when you're out and about, please keep your eyes peeled for, for people on bikes and people on scooters and people on motorcycles, pedestrians, you know, try to keep your focus where it should be, and that is, is driving and, and paying attention to, to your surroundings. So we will always work to make sure that our bike infrastructure and pedestrian infrastructure in Coralville is, is safe for the community. And that is all I have. City Admin, city attorneys' report?
I have nothing additional.
I know it's been warm out, but Friday, October 18th and Saturday, October 19th, Heartlanders season starts at the Extreme Arena, and with opening weekend, and I believe there's a tailgate before the Friday night game, so come out and enjoy that before the, before the first game. I talked to the coach, he's excited about his team this year, so hopefully make some more progress, make the playoffs this year.
Fantastic. Committee and council members' report, we'll start down at this end with Councilmember Goodrich.
Oh, thank you. I just, talking about the arena, there's many activities there. Look forward to a very busy season, and encourage everyone to check out their website and look for different ways that they can be involved and go down there to the River Landing, there's a lot going on. Thanks.
Awesome, thank you. Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This week is Mayor Cleanup Week, so if you have a lot of things that you no longer use, but it's still useful, please consider calling Houses Into Home and have them come pick it up or set it out on the curb so that someone else can benefit from it and not clock up our landfill. But Houses Into Home always are looking for smaller items because they furnish a lot of small household apartment, and so if you have, you know, side table or small kitchen table or even microwave, that is one item that I know that Houses Into Home is always looking for, is microwave and lamp. Those two items are always useful. So just consider when you clean your garage, your basement, Houses Into Home, give them a call. Congratulations to Houses Into Home as well for their wonderful fundraiser. I have to miss this one every single year. I always have a conflict, and this year, of course, I was not in town, so I was really sad to miss out. This is their third year, and it grows every year, and I'm just happy to see the community turn out and support a great organization that do great work in our community. Speaking of community, thank you to everyone who turned out last Friday to join us for the community meal. It was wildly successful, we served over 600 meals to our community member. It was a beautiful evening, and just to see everybody out, sitting on the lounge, conversing with one another, enjoying good food, good entertainment by our West High student, it was, it was really good to see. And thank you, Mayor, for being there as well. I know that Council Goodrich was out of town, but she's usually a frequent at our meal as well. And Kelly mentioned earlier that Midwest One Bank shut down all of their branches in Iowa City and Coralville, and we, the Coralville Food Pantry, actually a recipient of that generosity as well. So there was a team of eight that came and spent the entire afternoon with us, packing delivery, taking out delivery, packing pet food, wrapping diaper, you name it, we asked, it got done. So thank you. And that's all I have.
Excellent, thank you very much. One thing I do want to add very quickly, your children also, you had four children at Coralville Central, right?
Correct.
Yeah, yes, yes.
So my last one just graduated from Coralville Central last year, which made me really sad because I was banking on him to have one more year at Coralville Central student, but the school district, you know, moved all the sixth grader to middle school. So yeah, we say goodbye to Coralville Central last year, but that will always be a place that I hold dear to my heart. My oldest, who is a sophomore now in school, in, in college, started there, and we ended with our youngest, our number four. with our youngest, our number four, there, so, yeah. Good place.
And you had children there, too.
Yeah, mine each had Mrs. Crone and Mrs. Ferguson, the kindergarten teachers that are heading up this activity, so, that's cool.
Yeah, yeah, and our, our children are in the same class, and, and our city engineer's daughter is, and our kids are all in the same class, so, yeah, all attended Coralville Central, very special. Alright, Councilmember Vogelzang?
I had a whole page of things I wanted to talk about, most of which have already been talked about, so I won't repeat them, but I just, I would like to echo a thanks to all the city staff that hard work to put in in, in the plantings and to Alex for securing that, the DNR grant, that was awesome. $20,000, I believe, $20,000 goes a long ways. And then, yeah, echo my thanks to all the Midwest One employees, they, it was a great effort on their part, too. So, thanks for everybody that's helped do that. The, Cheryl wanted me to mention that the cross, the Creekside Cross and Flow Trails are now open over by the Creekside Sports Park. Thanks to everybody for their patience and their understanding for, you know, while those trails were closed during the, you know, while the stream bank project was, was being, was impacting those trails, so we just want to let everybody know that those, excuse me, those trails are now open. And then finally, I'd like to extend my congratulations to the three new Coralville Police Officers and for those that were promoted to lieutenant and sergeant, too, my congratulations, so, thank you.
Excellent. Finally, Councilmember Knutson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be a little bit repetitive as well, I guess, but be short. Want to echo what Kevin said about the Heartlanders, hopefully we have an exciting season. I'm getting season tickets and I'm missing opening weekend, so if anybody needs the tickets, reach out to me and I'm happy to, to share them for, I guess, both the 18th and the 19th. Should be fun, I'd like to see big crowds and sorry I can't be there for that. And then echo what I said about Houses Into Homes, I was a participant again this year and was smart enough to recruit Rob Rogers, who makes a heck of a brisket, and, and he, he, he was voted the, or his recipe or his food was voted the best in show, so to speak. And he got a nice little gift that he could give to his pops, as he'd call it, his dad, whose recipe he uses to make his brisket. And, and as I said, it was a very successful fundraiser for that very important organization. That's all I have, Mayor.
Alright, thank you so much. Well, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Moved by When? Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vogelzang, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.